Janie, can you hear me okay? Say that again.
And he hadn't been called to order yet.
We've got to call it to order to do something.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
That's right. There you go. Internet or? Need a power plug?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 15 edition of the Lexington City Council. Thank you all for being here. Before I call the meeting to order, would invite anyone who intends to speak tonight to please sign up on our sign up sheet and we'll look forward to recognizing you under citizens remarks and comments. And with that, I would like to call the meeting to order and our first order of business is if you will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you all very much. Again, on such a beautiful night. Thank you for making time to be with us and as we conduct the city's business. The first item is consideration of the agenda. Had a request from the city manager for an addition under presentations 5.3. If you could, this Patrick Madigan will be providing an update on some of the slip lining and construction efforts around the city. And and that's the only change that I'm aware of. Is there any other adjustments or? Hearing none, unless there's an objection, we will approve the agenda with that modification or that addition. Hearing no objections, it is approved and we'll move right into presentations. First is the city popular annual financial report and I'll call on Jen to make some introductions. I think. Yes.
Each year at VMI, the cadet is responsible for distilling our annual audit into a popular annual financial report. And this evening, we have the pleasure of welcoming Cadet John Cole Cathcart to present this year's report.
Welcome Cole. Always nice to have a local boy done good with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Am I standing in the right spot?
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to say first, it's it's great to be here in front of you all to be a part of this kind of civic duty and be to see this in action is pretty cool. So as was introduced by Jen, I'm John Cole Cathcart, a rising first classman senior at VMI. And I'm an economics and business major. So this project here, the popular annual financial report has happened for the past few years. VMI cadets have put it on with the help of a faculty advisor, Dr. Bing Zhang, who is not here. She's in China doing some work over there right now. So anyway, thanks to her and thanks to Jennifer and Jim for your help with this project. So here it is. And is, do I do the slide clicking then? Awesome. Okay. So what does the report cover? So for those who aren't familiar with the kind of financial report compiled by Jennifer, it breaks down the city's spending expenditures and revenues for throughout the fiscal year. These include major infrastructure improvements on the general funds of the day to day revenues and expenses of the city. As well as governmental revenues and expenditures as well as long term debt. I will also add that it includes kind of employment status of the city. It has some interesting statistics on kind of the economic movers and shakers of the city. Kind of who employs most of our residents. So first up is capital expenditures and infrastructure improvements. So there were some big kind of capital and infrastructure improvements in fiscal year 2022. If you look at the top left image, there's some major renovations done on Diamond Hill with regards to water and sewage. Around two, almost two and a half million dollars worth of renovations there that were necessary. As well as the Evergreen Cemetery entrance, the picture on the top right. Can see that there are some improvements there. Costs just shy of $50,000. As well as a crest rise in Moore's Creek Dam. So this is a report done by kind of the one of the scientific boards of the state that said that the dam, the Lexington Reservoir Dam needed to kind of increase its elevation in case of a major flooding or or water rise there. So that costs about $65,000. And a pretty fun one is the improvements to the fire department. There is quite an extensive process to get a new fire engine. You can see there on the bottom right. So the city coordinated with various manufacturers and third parties to get that done as well. So the general fund. So as I mentioned earlier, the general fund kind of covers the the day to day expenses of the city. It's the largest fund for for city use, basic city use there. So revenue wise, this includes some of the major kind of contributors to the revenue are general property taxes for Lexington city residents. Other local taxes as well as fines incurred for various infractions that contribute to the revenue. Also noted that intergovernmental transfers also contribute to the revenue here. So think transfers from the Commonwealth or transfers from the federal government as well. So now expenses, again, kind of the same bullet points here. It's the day to day operations, but there are a fair amount of expenses to make a city like Lexington as great as it is. So some of the biggest costs in fiscal year 2022 were public safety and public works. Kind of makes sense, you know, based on the prior slides, there were a lot of improvements to the city. You just, you have to spend money on things like this to to keep a city, keep a city going. Also, education is a pretty notable one there. It kind of highlights where the the city's priorities are, and I think rightfully so, a decent block is spent on education. So now the capital projects fund. So the capital projects fund manages the financial resources for construction, as I mentioned earlier. It also tracks restricted committed and assigned funds for specific purposes. So the fund operates independently to ensure that construction is is managed efficiently and ethically. So the beginning balance was around 3.7 million at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then it was at 4.5 at the end, and that's thanks to some intergovernmental transfers and revenues that help kind of boost that. So it's always good to to have the capital projects fund with a good balance there. So government revenue and expenditure overall. So the total revenue for the city of Lexington was about 20 million. You can see in the graph here, we have fiscal year 20, 21 and 22. You can see that revenue actually decreased overall due to some unrealized losses on investments in the use of money and property funds. So that's kind of worth noting that those are like on paper losses, if that makes sense. So while it looks like in this presentation that revenues actually decreased, these are funds that, you know, just had bad performance over the fiscal year. So it's not necessarily a bad thing there either. So now expenditure. So total expenditure was around 18.2. If you recall back to the last slide. Revenues were around 20 million. So it's always good to be in the red there. Again, total expenditure can be attributed to increased spending on public safety and public works. So you can see the gray and the yellow graphs there kind of demonstrate the increase over the past three fiscal years. So long term debt, this is kind of the elephant in the room. Nobody likes to talk about, but it's good news for the city of Lexington, I believe. So the total debt obligation fiscal year 22 increased by about 6 million. Why that sounds kind of like a daunting figure. The, as you can see in the bottom slide, the debt limitation for the city of Lexington is 58 million. So while the city currently sits at around 33 million long term debt, they're well below the allotted kind of debt ceiling for the city, which is is awesome. So that's, that's a great thing. So in conclusion, the city of Lexington continues to spend and allocate wisely, in my opinion, in my advisor, Dr. Zhang's opinion. Expenditures are allocated to worthy causes and that does not go unnoticed. Another thing worth noting that I have not mentioned is a highlight of the fiscal year 22 was the wage compensation study. So through the COVID-19 pandemic, I know we're all familiar with kind of some labor shortages and some issues there. So the city of Lexington invested in a wage study done by the Berkeley Group out of Bridgewater. Kind of showed the city of Lexington where their compensation was lacking. And city of Lexington took that, acted upon it, increased wages, you know, kind of based on that report. And as a result, they're able to keep talented labor and even acquire new, more talented labor to the city and keep them engaged and keeping the city going. So that is quite commendable. Also, as I mentioned multiple times, education, public works and public safety, while the spending kind of was a majority there, it was a is a worthy cause. So that is all I have. If there's any questions from the council, gladly take them. But if not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cole. I imagine there's an inquisitive group up here. Council members have questions. Mr. Ziegler.
I went back and I was looking at our popular annual financial reports from the past and you worked on one several years ago, right?
Yes, sir.
So based on what you, you know, kind of learned a few years ago, if you remember, and now looking at our financials this year. You know, what do you, you know, what's your sense or, you know, was that really good to look at it when you were maybe a third?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And now you'll be a first. Just any, any insights from that?
Yes, sir. I think if I can recall correctly, so I did it in the spring of 21. So we're still kind of working through the COVID pandemic. So a larger thing at play then was kind of support from the the Commonwealth and from the federal government to an extent, you know, that that didn't include just municipalities. It was, you know, private, you know, commercial business and stuff like that. But seeing the city of Lexington completely move away from that and become, you know, again stable and operating without much government assistance was really, really encouraging. So that's the biggest thing, I think, but.
Well, I love the way that you're able to, you know, essentially summarize a year in in five easy to read pages. And one of the highlights that even it jogged my memory, just to point out, is you mentioned the Moore's Creek Dam where we had to raise it up a few feet.
Correct.
You know, you think about why we had that surplus at the end of the year with our revenues exceeding our expenses. Well, that project we had budgeted $110,000. Ended up being done in house with the labor that you just talked about with our teams, with our, our public works crews primarily. And that cost the taxpayer $65,000 to complete. So right there, we did considerable savings. Because we were able to do that, that in house. And it was really cool to have that, you know, kind of jogged in my memory that that you highlighted that. So thank you.
Yes, sir, of course.
And the council members have questions.
When you were, when you were going through the money and property category in terms of unrealized loss on the investments in the fund, was there anything that stood out to you in that in that category in terms of? You know, anything you noticed that that came to your attention?
No, I, I did not dig too deeply into what was within that category. I just was kind of explained what that, what that meant and added that to the, to the report. But no, I'm not sure if I had access or not to what was within that. You know, the the unrealized gains or losses, but no, nothing in particular.
Excellent job on the report.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Betts, if you'd like some information, I'm sure the finance director could provide the information on that question that you had.
Excellent.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for being with us on, you're certainly out of school now for about a month. And I'm sure excited for the conclusion of the first year. Thank you specifically for highlighting that we aren't going to have a debt ceiling debate in Lexington, at least not anytime soon. So.
Yes, yes. And I did want to say also forgive me for the shaggy beard. We don't get to grow them at VMI. So I have to have to go with that now, but thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
You're looking great and please tell your parents hello.
Would you like the finance director now to come up and answer that question, Mr. Betts had or?
Sure. I mean, don't want to put her on the spot, but if she has the answer, would love to.
And for the use of money and property, that is includes our interest earnings. And so in FY22, they actually came in far below what we had budgeted. So that really made the big difference there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, 0% interest rates when you budget two makes a substantial difference. Excellent. Cole, thank you for being with us and that great presentation. Next on the agenda, Earth Magic Recycling presentation. Kathy, welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Some of you may not realize what we do, so I brought some show and tell items.
Outstanding.
So some of you may not know me. I'm Kathy Wirtan and I have Earth Magic Recycling in Buena Vista. And we do food and beverage glass. So I don't know if you have a whole lot of glass at home, but we sure do. And, you know, we wanted to make a difference and try to keep that out of the landfill. I apologize for so many owns. I'm just nervous.
But just relax. We're glad you're here and educating us on, on how to better dispose of our glass.
Well, actually Lexington is at the top of the chain there. They're doing very well. So our mission provides us that opportunity to educate the community on the benefits of glass recycling. And so this is a little bit of what we're doing there. And then we partner with other businesses, small businesses, which we have some in the whole surrounding area in the county. And different municipalities. So of course we work with Lexington. We're working with Buena Vista Public Works and with Push and Forge Public Works. And lots of counties, which you have all that information. But it also gives us an opportunity to do something that wasn't currently being done because a lot of the recycling program shut down in 2018 due to the cost. So what we do is we take that food and beverage glass in and we clean it. And we run it through the machines and it comes out just like you fill in the samples. We can do the five different particle sizes. Basically from powder to about a fourth of an inch. And that product can be used in utility sand, which is those particles, but still has a little bit of the paper residue in it. And so of course that's good for sandbags, which we do a lot of. And we do tube bags, which are good for water diversion. And then we do recreational sand, which you have in front of you. And we've recently found yet another use for it, therapy sand. Apparently therapy sand's been in use since the 1950s. And we have a couple of therapists that we're working with now. So that's pretty interesting for us. And we recently finished the first phase of a huge project with Natural Bridge State Park. We did their golf keys and they turned out well. And so now I understand that we're going to start on phase two, which will be another nine tons. It takes us a little bit to get nine tons. We work on a volunteer basis. And we're also in some talks with Massanutten just outside of Harrisonburg. And we're trying to do an exchange where they bring us a percentage of their glass. And we provide them with sand trap sand, which is something I had not thought of honestly. So we're growing in lots of different ways. And some of our numbers. Last year Lexington. In a short year, we took in almost three tons of glass from Lexington. And this year, just through May, we've already doubled that into six tons. So I think that's a significant change, you know, and it's a good savings through public works. So I think that's a significant change, you know, and it's a good savings through public works. Because they're not paying those tipping fees and stuff. And I understand that maybe it's helping the citizens to feel um, a little bit better, um, that they're recycling glass. And so of course we have our bins at the, um, Lexington Recycle Center. And it's accessible to the residents all the time. And public works, um, you know, helps us with that once a week. And we're doing lots of good things. So you have any questions or there's?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And again, glad you're here. Members of council have questions?
I do. Um, are you having any bottlenecks? Not to have a bad pun, but is it on, on receiving the glass or processing the glass? Or do you have too much inventory of sand?
Well, um, each process is working well. Um, probably the bottleneck would be, uh, removing the labels. There's not a quick way to do that. It's all done by hand. And, uh, so, you know, we have a supply of sandbags in which we're always looking to sell our products because that helps us fund free glass recycling in different communities. So, you know, we're looking to get that in from that product back out.
Well, that's good to know. So should, we should encourage everybody to take off the labels from their?
If they can, actually they're, they're pretty well trained. Most of them do remove the labels and remove the, um, foil and aluminum from the tops. So they try hard to make it easier for us.
Right.
Do you, do you have the capacity to take in, um, more glass about the same as what you're taking in now or?
We can step it up a little bit. Um, I actually also work full-time. So this is a evenings and weekend time. So looking at those numbers, you know, it's pretty amazing that we get so much out. But we can certainly pick it up some as well.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
What, what is therapy sand?
Um, therapy sand is maybe a little bit more coarse than what you were looking at. And so people, um, use this as, um, a treatment for sensory challenges. And so it helps them with anxiety. Um, sometimes it's used in cases of autism, but it's also used for trauma victims.
So what, and I'm, I'm not familiar with how that works. You just hold on to it and kind of?
I can't say that I completely understand it myself. The therapist has to be certified. And so then they walk the patient through that.
Okay. Great. Um, and a couple of other hats that I wear, friends in Natural Bridge State Park and thanks for partnering with us for those, those tea boxes. I know that's one of the, you know, priorities of the park is to use, you know, recycled or natural materials in the projects that, that they undertake. And also on the landfill board diverting solid waste to better purposes is, is always on our, our radar as well. So.
Well, we're certainly hoping to help raise Virginia's glass recycling rates and certainly for Rockridge County.
But, but thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, you're doing a great job with it and, uh, very thankful and I'm, uh, thankful for your explanation of the therapy. Uh, glass because I envision, uh, a therapist perhaps creating a, uh, beach environment where you could sink your toes into the sand and think about the beach without having to drive, uh, uh, to, to the coast.
Um, that would be a good thing to do.
May, may mention it to the therapist when you see them next as a.
I think of it. I think of like the little zen gardens.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, Kathy, talk a little bit about, you mentioned volunteers, um, right now is how you're, uh, operating or your manpower?
Yes.
Um, do you have any employees or is it all?
Right now we're completely volunteer.
Okay.
Um, my family tends to be the volunteers. So sometimes they would like breaks. Um, so we're actually working with, uh, Southern Virginia University on some of their mission-based projects for volunteers. Um, I didn't mention the pilot program that we're working on. Sorry about that. We're working with the schools on a glass recycling, um, pilot program. We've tried it out with Washington and Lee. It's been very successful. Um, I was in talks with VMI this week. They're very interested. They're just going through their final, um, approvals. And then of course, Southern Virginia is interested as well. And, um, so we're hoping, you know, from the, uh, higher ed environment to get some more volunteers, but then, uh, we've had some of the churches reach out to us as well. And so we already have a waiver in place if volunteers would like to come. And it's always on Saturdays. You have a little bit of time.
Great, great way, great people to spend time with. So if anybody wanted to volunteer, um, online.
The best way to reach us is always through our website. And it's just www.earthmagicrecycling.com.
Perfect, perfect.
A little easier than answering phone calls a lot of the time.
Indeed. Uh, and you can get to it when you have the opportunity. I don't know that VMI would be willing, but if there, uh, folks would need to work off penalty tours from demerits and can volunteer, uh, Earth, uh, uh, Magic Recycling, uh, could, could be an option, but, uh,
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe. Very good. Again, thank you for being with us and more importantly, thank you for the work that you and Nick and your husband do, uh, to keep this, um, uh, going. And if people want to see it in action, um, I know it's in Buena Vista in the address across the railroad tracks.
In the old Mundet Building.
Right.
So it's, uh, it's two forty-five twenty-first street. And we're sort of in the back corner. So we have the door marked with our emblem.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Thanks for making time to be with us and updating us and look forward to positive partnership going forward. Yeah, just, uh, learn, learn, uh, any other details at www.earthmagicrecycling.com. So encourage you to find a Saturday to volunteer. Good deal. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Patrick Madigan with an update from Public Works. Patrick, uh, while it's booting up, congratulations on the, uh, Route sixty west bridge being completed. Uh, people are no, no longer having to wait for the light to change and, uh, you know, traffic flowing terrifically and it's an attractive bridge. So thank you for, uh, overseeing that project and excited to hear what you have for us this evening.
Thank you. Yeah. Burly did a, a great job on that. And Swartz, who is our A and E who put together the design package, uh, and we're involved with the construction inspections, did a great job. So thank you for the kind words. And it's good to have it open for the public and I appreciate everyone's patience. Well, we had it down. Just to give you a, a quick overdate or overview and, uh, what Jim wanted me to do was, uh, give an update because obviously you've been hearing about, and Mr. Allagood's been spreading or you've been hearing with, with our water plant and MSA partners about INI, which is inflow and infiltration. And, uh, we've been talking about it for quite a while and it's definitely going to be a decade challenge for us. Um, you know, it ultimately affects the citizens and residents because it gets affected into our rate. And what that is, is the inflow and infiltration is basically, uh, in our system where we basically have unfortunately leaks, collapses, groundwater getting in, rainwater entering, and that is all obviously a volume that eventually ends up at the wastewater treatment plant that we have to pay to be treated. And then that affects the capacity of our plant. So this is, this is not unique to Lexington. This is everywhere on the planet that has a sewer system where they have to deal with this issue. And it's based on the age and the system. So we have attacked it obviously in a couple of different directions, Diamond Hill being one, where we go in and we replace a system collectively. Uh, another is if we can use treatment techniques that will, save us money, but achieve the same results without having to tear up people's streets or invade their, their, their spaces as least as possible and kind of leverage the infrastructure we do have. So, uh, my predecessor had set up in what's called an IDIQ contract, which is indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity with a company called AM Liner. And, uh, what you can see in the diagram, um, it might be hard to see exactly where we're talking about, but it's primarily Providence Hill and, uh, and also the Shenandoah Acres subdivision. So that is kind of the phase one where it was complete. And that's where we went in and basically did footfall, passed in place, cured, passed in place, cured. Uh, um, um, encapsulation. And, and what that basically does is it basically lines the inside of the, the sewer pipe. And instead of having to dig up and replace it, and that can give you another fifty to seventy-five years, maybe even beyond, um, and, and using it in place. At about seven to 10 times less the cost of having to come in with, with new construction. So this obviously is the highest elevation of Lexington. Um, this is where we, we started because again, my predecessor had some studies done, which, uh, may or may not have been presented to you with, with, uh, uh, some of these various sewer sheds and what kind of infiltration we were getting. And this was kind of targeted, um, outside of those that were scheduled for a complete replacement like Diamond Hill. So this was the next hotspot to kind of hit in this area, which is a Providence Hill. The, um, red line and the green line to the south where we show current, that's what we're getting ready to do. So that's the awareness, um, that, uh, we wanted to bring to you tonight and also the public. We have, and Janey's, um, helped us create notices to get out on our website, uh, and have our PSAs out. Um, our contractors will be putting out door hangers a week in advance from the streets that will be affected. But to give you, uh, the boundary of the area that work's going to be done, it's, uh, Link Road East to Johnstone Street to Stonewall to Oakview Drive. So this work will be about four to six weeks. Um, basically the week prior, uh, the, um, contractor will put out notices which explain the process and give some guidance to our residents, uh, and also warn them of the potential odor that may be coming because this is polystyrene, which is basically plastic. There's a scheme process, um, that cures it in place. Um, so folks have to, for that particular day and the notice asks them to, uh, um, to basically limit their, their use of anything that's going to go down the drain from a sense of using their water, if they can not use and create anything. Cause what's going to happen is their sewer outfall is going to be plugged and they could have a backup into their house for that period while they're lining it. And, um, and what it also informs them to do or ask them to do is to put water in any of their P traps or drains. And it explains what that is, but that's basically the gooseneck under a sink or in your floor drain of your basement. It has basically like a reverse S and that keeps a pocket of water that's there to help keep that odor or vapors from coming back up into your home. And, uh, so that's what folks will be advised of as well as the fact that after the lining is done, the contractor may have to reestablish the connection, the sewer connection to our main. Um, they have a device that they will basically have in the sewer main that will try to clear that. But if not, they may have to dig up at that spot and reestablish the connection physically. So it may be, uh, excavating in some people's yards. And that's what the notice also gives them, um, some awareness of. And and also what we have on the, uh, on the notice is, um, the points of contact for us in public works. Uh, the project manager is Doug Sisson and, uh, it has the AM, uh, or the, um, uh, AM Liner's point of contact as well. And they will also contact everyone on the street the day of the work as well to give them notice. Um, work will be Monday through Friday, uh, from eight AM to five PM. Uh, sort of our normal work hours, uh, quiet hour or respecting the quiet hours and, uh, um, and, uh, I think that kind of covers most of the highlights for the particular project. Currently that's going to happen. The future work that you see in phase two, the green line in the middle, that's basically the dividing line of the sheds. So, um, basically everything to the south, uh, flows down to Sarah's Run. Everything to the north is going towards the golf course and the country club. And that basically drains to the Woods Creek, um, collector that we have. So, um, what we are pushing AM Liner to do is to camera that portion. Uh, so we can, um, possibly, uh, continue to line i- in those areas if possible, um, during this evolution. If not, what we will at least have is some data to then go back and do the preliminary steps that we have to do when we do any lining. And just to let you know, over the last eight months, there was a work up to this point. What we have to do is not only camera the line to understand if there's any breaks, sags, collapse, misalignments, um. And then wherever those points are, those then become a point repair. And so the, the subcontractors to AM Liner have, uh, done that work over the last several months. And then we do, um, also line all the manholes and then also get manholes put in um, in various locations. So we can get the longest stretch of runs with, uh, with the lining. The, the weekly target for AM Liner is to get anywhere between nine hundred and twelve hundred feet per week. Um, again, that's going to be dependent upon what they actually encounter in the ground as well as weather. So that's kind of a highlight of the project coming. Um, like I said, we, we have, we have it posted. We have the PSA going out. And, uh, and look forward to getting as much lined as we can.
Patrick, two questions. Uh, one, they say depend upon whether in rain, they're not able to function.
That's right.
Okay. Obviously the drain and what may be getting into it.
Uh, exactly.
Uh, and also, uh, for instance, on Stonewall Street, uh, about halfway up the hill, there was a big section that was cut out. It's currently gravelled. Will that, once this is completed, will that be resurfaced? That's, that's where they'll go in and do some of the.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's where some of the point repairs were, were done.
Right.
And so at the completion, we'll, we'll basically patch all those areas. And, uh, excuse me, they leave it in that condition in case the point repair didn't take.
Right.
We need to go back and, and kind of do some more work. On the QC side of the house or at the end of this, which was part of Diamond Hill, to make you aware, we, um, uh, we've purchased, uh, and they're on their way, some meters, uh, basically sewer flow meters. So we can, uh, a- as I like to say, um, um, staff gets tired of me kind of saying it, but I want a thermometer in the meatloaf. I want to know how we're cooking. So this will at least, uh, will have at least pre and post determination of how, uh, some of this lining or even in Diamond Hill. We have some of that pre-data. Now we'll put out these meters. We'll do it during different events and try to gauge where we're at. And so, uh, so this way we can, we can validate the work that we've done.
Terrific. Members of council have questions? Ms. Strong?
Uh, so barring heavy rain, phase one, the red line, uh, how long do you expect the overall project to take?
About four to six weeks.
Okay. And what is roughly the timeline for, is there a timeline for phase two or is that just out in the future?
That, that's out in the future and predicated on funding for, from y'all to, to kind of push into that.
And how long by relining the pipes, how long do you expect to extend their useful life?
So fifty to seventy-five years. I think seventy-five is what they target, but I kind of give it a fifty to seventy-five range.
Right. We add a fraction of the cost of replacing those lines. It's a great process. Difficult. Hopefully everyone will, will understand the benefits of it and help us out with it. And thank you for putting out the notifications because it is important for people to, uh, air out their house if they smell anything or contact.
Exactly.
The appropriate contact people.
Mr. Ziegler, uh, during the work, is there any opportunity for them to, will they be digging and, and potentially hit other utilities? Or, or will the contractor do a good job of utilizing misutility? Cause we always seem to find them.
Yes, sir. Well, and, uh, yes, and, and, and a lot of that was done when we did the point repairs themselves. And so, uh, so it should stay within the existing sewer line and we shouldn't have to go outside of that. So, but if we do, we'll, we'll be prepared, most definitely. Yeah, to have those.
And thanks for the, in advance for the communication. I know Janie does a great job with that, but in a situation like this, obviously I'll speak for all the residents, over-communication is a great thing. So that if people happen to hear the message three times, that's okay. You know, it's very important. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, in regards to phase two, um, if you know at this time, do, do you anticipate doing relining or replacement for phase two?
It's a good candidate for relining.
Got it.
We just don't know until we camera.
Sure.
How many, uh, point repairs we may have to do. Uh, or if they necessitate sort of longer sections of replacement, if they are. Um, but, but right now the, the whole shed, both sheds are, are, are the candidates for it based on, uh, on what they are.
Yeah.
Which is basically terr- uh, terracotta. So.
Mr. Smith.
I'm just curious how much of a surge MSA has. When there's a significant rain event of. What's the percentage increase in that fluent versus? What what usual flow is?
Their, so their pulse that they're seeing from us is is a peak of anywhere from six to nine million gallons. When they would see roughly a million when when the schools are in and we have a normal. I guess September to to May, sort of our largest population base. We use, we're sending about a million gallons down to them, but when there's a rain event, the the peak. Could, if if it were sustained, it would be somewhere around six to nine million gallons going down to. So during the, and it depends on that particular event, but it's, it can certainly be upwards of about another million gallons total. But at any one time, the rate coming down to them is about six to nine million, which could overwhelm the plant.
Their their capacity is about four, right?
Exactly. Yeah, they're permitted for higher than than that, but that's the steady state that they they balance to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alligood.
And and at the MSA plant, it has been the case during the big rain that the flow meter pretty much was at its peak capacity such that you really didn't know what the flow was. It was exceeding the peak of the of the meters. One of the things that came about in the Diamond Hill area was there was an attempt at relining that due to camera work, we learned that we couldn't do that, which greatly increased the overall cost of the project. Because you had to dig it all up, all the lines up and and replace them. And that's what we're crossing our fingers that we don't have to do again with that. But so the the camera work is is what we use to tell that story. Another issue that has kind of been laying hanging around. Is flows from the county as well as from the city. And it was difficult to tell what amount was allocated to the county and to the city on the south end of town. Are the flow meters that you've mentioned, are any of those scheduled for installation in the south end?
So the, yes, sir. So the meters we have, we'll be able to mount them wherever we want throughout the system. So they won't be permanently mounted. We can, we can move them around. So and we have a, we have a professional services contract with Hunter Young, civil consultants. And so Hunter does a lot of our studies and he's the. From his studies is why we're doing this lining and where we're doing this lining. So he will help us attack and look at that, and that is on on our list to look at, look at, again, kind of get that thermometer around the whole meatloaf and see what it's doing and when it's doing and get and get kind of those validated numbers.
And and to somewhat define the scope, the the range of flows from one to the other. We don't really know what what the flows are, but we do know that water or wastewater that flows through the pipe that goes through Lexington is billed to Lexington. Once it gets to the waste treatment plant in there. So so maybe we, with the installation of a flow meter to get a gauge on it. We'd find out we might be able to save a little bit of money. I'm not sure what we're talking about. I have no clue on what kind of flows we're talking about, and that's the reason for the meters in there. So congratulations. Sounds like a great project.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes, Patrick. The the diamond. Pipes were pretty damaged. And all indications were that they were very old. Are there any indications or any records to show that the infrastructure in the green area is similar in age or not as old?
Not not as old, fifties is kind of what we're seeing on some of those subdivision developments kind of throughout from the the green area and kind of bounded by the green and the red, that whole shed, both the south and 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 sort of the, well, the east and the west, I guess, that that whole area. What we've got as as an age and and we actually still have some of the survey records and the original as-built drawings, they're in the fifties. Late forties, early fifties, kind of when some of those subdivisions went in. And so that's, so that's the age, similar material, I think the same two or three developers from what we could tell from some of the notes and and nineteen fifties timeframe. So already pushing kind of that seventy-five years. You know, and so. That's why with the relining, maybe we can push it out a little further. And and Diamond was much, much older as well as Jackson, which is to the north of all of this. So that's why we have the replacement for those areas because that is similar to Diamond Hill. If not older than Diamond Hill, some of the drawings we have for those are the late eighteen eighties, early eighteen nineties, when when those systems went in throughout the Jackson sheds. So that's why we have that and that and that will be a three-phase project that we have out for starting in twenty-five. And 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 then that will take care of the west side, the northwest side of town.
Two, two and a half square miles. There's a lot of piping running through it. Patrick, the the red that's about to be completed, as you say, it's under current phase one. Do you know what the price tag is anticipated for that? What's budgeted?
So 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 far, we've we've spent about close to about six hundred thousand to include what's been completed and then the work to date with the cammering, point repairs. And then the installation of manholes. We're looking hopefully to do about another close to five hundred K with this work. The way the contract kind of works, it's it's sort of like you're riding a taxi, the meter's going. So based on material and time and and when we get done and there may be a deletes and adds when we get done. But the target estimate we have from them based on the camera work and the areas is is a little over five hundred.
But the whole project because of the pre-work being about a million bucks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I asked that for concept, you talked about phase two coming into play. Depending upon funding, so it ain't sexy, but everybody loves for to flush it and it go away, but.
And not back up into the house.
Exactly, but the million dollars for this stretch and more than likely around the same expenses, things are in reasonable shape to be able to line.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
And and the main trunks for both of these areas, they they, the collectors, as we call them, or the interceptors, the main trunks. Align with our creeks, so that's where we, you know, if there is a a crack or a leak, just think about it, all that stream flow, that groundwater is getting in. So definitely a priority for us to target those areas.
Terrific. Mr. Alligood.
And and this work, just to let people know, is directly related to the MSA modernization projects that are scheduled, haven't been funded yet. But anytime you can shift upstream before water flows get to the plant, you reduce the overall cost of the project. And that's one of the big considerations is how much of that can we actually implement and make happen? When we're looking at overall projects in the vicinity of ninety to a hundred million dollars. Years ago, you know, there was a Senator Dirksen who talked about, you know, a billion here and a billion there. We're not talking billions, but we are talking millions. Certainly adds up and anytime we could do something that would affect by reducing the overall cost that's needed to modernize that plan is a good thing to do. And so this is, even though it's the city of Lexington, it's directly related to the business we have with the MSA. So thanks again.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, bottom line upfront, as I like to say, you know, from city manager and I mean, this is, this is a return on investment for sure, you know, for all the reasons kind of discussed.
Terrific. Patrick, thanks again for being with us and updating us. And more importantly, thank you for the work that you and your team do. The triangle down on the north end of the city of downtown looks terrific and is a wonderful improvement. The new bridge, grass growing and water and sewer working properly on Diamond Hill. Lots of great projects that have been accomplished. So thank you to your team.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We don't have any public hearings this evening, but we have for your consideration, the minutes from June one and our work session of June five. And those were included in your packet. Are there any changes or corrections, Mr. Betts?
Yes, yes, sir. I believe on page twenty-two of the meeting packet. In regards to the paragraph with the motion. What was approved was an ordinance as presented and in the two places, in the two specified places in the ordinance and authorized. So so I believe we would need to substitute the word agreement for the word ordinance in those two places within that paragraph.
Very good. Janey's got that. Any objections to that modification? Very pensive looks. From your peers. And it was indeed an ordinance that we passed from that standpoint. So with that modification, are there any objections to approving the minutes? They are approved. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Nick. Good eye. Next item on the agenda is citizens' remarks and comments. We don't have anyone that signed up, but is there anyone who would like to speak this evening, wants to address council on any issues? Hearing the drone of the air handler will close the citizens' remarks and comments at seven forty-nine. And move into the consent agenda and ask for council's consideration for the three requests there, street closure, host a parade on Monday, January fifteen. Street closure to host a gathering Tuesday, July fourth and waiver the peddler's license on Saturday, July fifteenth.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion of second and ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Strong. Mr. Smith. Mr. Betts. Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, partygoers and party planners. Look forward to all those events that enrich our city. Unfinished business. I'm going to ask the city manager to take the ten point one, the Horse Center. We're been waiting on them to come back to council and they will be coming sometime, just not sure when. But instead of having a placeholder there, we'll ask for that to be removed for future agendas. Next is ten point two, update on two oh one North Randolph Street and call on city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I do not have any updates. I've not heard anything more from the owners of the property or any other interested parties at this time.
Thank you, sir. And appointment of candidate to Lexington City School Board. We had our interviews two weeks ago with four fantastic candidates. And we get the privilege to appoint someone and before calling council. Consideration, just want to thank all four folks that presented themselves. Obviously, three of you will not be appointed, but I would invite you to stay in focused on service to the city. We have openings on the Planning Commission in particular, I think on ARB and some others. So if there are some other ways that you would find interesting to serve the city, we would love to engage and talk with you about that as well. But with that, I would ask for council's consideration for appointment of school board.
I move to appoint Sandra Hazlett to the open seat on the school board.
That's a four-year term that would start July one, twenty twenty-three, three-year term, excuse me, yes, three-year term. That would be July one, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six.
A second.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion?
The only discussion is just so clarification because it got a little muddied at the last meeting. We are appointing this person to a three-year term, but it will effectively, and Jeremy, if you're there, it'll effectively end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and this this seat will be up for reelection from that first.
This will be, this will be one of the three seats that will be elected at that first election. Yes.
Thank you.
So this seat will be on the ballot.
In November of twenty-four.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Ms. Strong. Any other discussion? Hearing none would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Betts. Mr. Alligood. Ms. Alexander. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Again, thank you to the candidates for presenting yourselves. As we've talked about before, have the opportunity to get your name on a ballot in November. Or actually, we'll have an appointment in June of next year for two seats and then the election in in the fall. So thank you all for considering and those of you who may be interested in one of the other boards or commissions of the city, please let me know of your interests and love to talk to you about that in ways that you can support your friends and neighbors going forward. Next item on the agenda. Is reports and commissions, calling Mr. Smith for the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met Monday. Two items of note, we directed. Director Dudley to move forward the purchase of a track loader for the landfill. The purchase price currently is around four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Delivery time expected to be about six months or so, have not made a decision yet on financing or paying cash. Second, our expenditures are running below budget and our revenues are running above budget. So we're we're in good shape at the landfill. Things are running great. And kudos to the staff out there to keep that on that track. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith.
Fourth of July Parade, Fourth of July for the for the kids in town. It's a great event. Huge turnout and it's a, it's a, it's just fun to watch, so I hope everybody can get out and enjoy, enjoy that, that time. Retreat is scheduled for July. And the QR coding on the on the poles is still in in sort of beta phase. We're waiting for some extra support from from tourism, but everybody's overwhelmed with Freedom Food Festival organization right now. So the the QR QR code programming has kind of been put on hold temporarily until we get past the Fourth of July holiday.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions? Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
Sure. Planning Commission met last Thursday, June eighth, and we considered an application proposing a preliminary subdivision plat, which included a boundary line adjustment and boundary line vacation for parcels located at one hundred eleven Rebel Ridge Road and five ninety-seven Ross Road. The application was unanimously approved and will come before council at our July twentieth meeting. We continued our discussion on accessory dwellings. And the WNL site plan application for the new Williams School Building on the south side of West Washington Street behind St. Patrick Catholic Church will come before the Planning Commission at our June twenty-second meeting. And while site plans for smaller projects do not come to council for approval, this one will because of the scale of the project. So I imagine we will see it again probably at that same July, did I say twenty-second, twentieth meeting? And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Strong. Any questions regarding those items? Thank you for your work and service on the Planning Commission. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Betts.
I really have a new report other than to say that the Thistle Ridge Disc Golf event at Natural Bridge State Park was excellent. Attended as did, you know, a couple of other members of council and it was a great event and seems like a fun thing to do, get out there and play disc golf. I tried my hand at it. It was pretty fun.
Very good. Thank you. Lots of fun things out there. I was going to say I noted in a report I read in in the past week that for for tourism, museums and some other, if you will. Or what the big thing now for tourism is pickleball courts and pickleball competitions. People, when they travel, try and pick up pickleball matches when they're when they're on vacation. So exciting time and disc golf, I'm sure is coming along right behind it. Rockbridge Area Recreation, Mr. Ziegler.
We met last Wednesday. We met at the new timber frame at Brubaker Field, so we met outside. It was a beautiful day.
Um, so, um, we kind of recapped our spring sports that, that have concluded. Uh, a big thank you to Southern Virginia University. They hosted our, uh, tournament finals for softball, which always makes it kind of fun for for all the kids that, that played softball and SVU has a great facility. Uh, so we are really appreciative uh, of that. You mentioned pickleball. If you'd like to play pickleball, uh, there's open court play, uh, Monday and Wednesday at Maury River Middle School from six fifteen to eight fifteen, and then also open court play at Rivermont, uh, from six to eight on Wednesday.
Inside?
Uh, inside at Maury River Middle School, Rivermont, uh, actually, I think we've converted the outdoor tennis courts, one of, uh, two of them to pickleball, um, I believe.
Very good.
Uh, and then coed softball is occurring right now. Uh, we are, we've got twelve teams, which of course we restarted that last year. It went really well, uh, twelve teams again this summer. It's fantastic. And then I think, um, again, I've been talking about it a while, but wanted to highlight the, the summer programs. Kayaking has concluded. We were able to take about twenty kids and it went extremely well and a big thank you to Maury River Smallmouth and Journey Outdoors, um, for helping facilitate that and all the kids having access to a, to a kayak. Uh, and after doing, you know, obviously some training at swimming pools and so on, they were able to get some floats in, um, uh, in, in, I think at Lake Robertson and, uh, on the, on the river. So really a great thing for kids to, to get their feet wet, huh? No pun intended. Um, but then in July, we will be doing a hiking and backpacking camp so that kids get an exposure to all the great trails. I'm not sure which trails that we're going to use, but we know we have a ton of them. Uh, and so Walkabout Outfitters is going to kind of be a, one of the partners in that. So that's exciting, um, that again, kids can do that. Uh, we've had signups for fall sports. As you know, we always do signups, uh, in the spring before kids get out of school, uh, so that those, those sports can start up in August, um, right away. Obviously, we're still taking signups right now for soccer and football and cheer, but it was really good that we do those signups, uh, in the spring because we've, our numbers are trending upwards and that means for football, you might remember it's a hard, it's a challenge to get helmets. We provide the equipment for these kids and you, you know, you need to have your, your helmets, uh, certified regularly and then you need to buy helmets and everyone's buying helmets. And so they're expensive and it's hard to find youth helmets. And so it's good for us to know that we, we've got this interest and we're, we're hard, we're shopping, uh, right now. Um, so essentially that's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say huge kudos to Chad and to, to you, to the board for expanding the recreational opportunities. I mean, it's great to get past just the mainstream sports. And again, as I mentioned before, having more of the adult programming, but that, that's fantastic. That's a great lineup.
I think it's really also a testament to the community because there's these activities that that a lot of folks do and that's RARO's job is to introduce kids to them. And that's why I think, you know, Journey Outdoors and wherever Smallmouth, I mean, it's just so fantastic that these private entities, these companies are giving up their time and some of their products to these kids. And so it's, uh, it is Chad, our executive director, that's taking the lead on some of the summer programs. You know, we've got a robust staff that is stretched very thin when you've got all of these activities and maintenance of fields. And I didn't even mention that at the end of June, we'll be hosting a ten-under, ten-and-under, uh, Cal Ripken, uh, youth baseball tournament at Brubaker, and I think that's nine to ten teams from around the state that will kind of descend on Lexington. And so our, you know, our staff and public works, works together to make the fields look fantastic at Brubaker and Fox Field. So Chad's doing a lot, but our staff is putting in the hours every day, every week. So thank you.
That's great.
Also just point out that, um, RARO, uh, works most effectively with volunteers. So if you have a desire for, uh, camping, perhaps looking for volunteers to assist with that process, walkabouts supplying gear, and it is exciting to see the businesses investing in their future customers, uh, train them up and, uh, they'll be a customer for life. So, uh, sort of local LL Bean effort.
Well, and I will say, I mean, we've, the feedback from kayaking was tremendous that the kids loved it, but we've already heard from some adults that said, I'm afraid to get on the river with a kayak. I bought a kayak. I've never used it and I would love, you know, professional training. So it's like, oh gosh, you know, there's only so much that we can do, but we're trying to provide for the community. So, you know, maybe that's in our future. I don't want to sign. No promises.
Yeah. Vol- volunteers being the core, uh, staple of, of RARO. Thank you, uh, Mr. Ziegler. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
No report. We hope to meet later this month.
Terrific. Uh, Maury Service Authority, Mr. Alligood.
No report.
Excellent. Thank you for your service with those rascals. Uh, for my report, I have a couple of items. Um, first I'm going to defer to Ms. Alexander to give a report on the VML conference that took place this week and things that she learned on that. Ms. Alexander.
It was a pretty good day yesterday with a lot of great subjects and things that, um, great takeaways, um, from this conference. Um, the first topic that was presented had to do with marijuana in the workplace since it's been legalized. And the gentleman started out with joints, gummies, edibles, CBD products. All of these things are, um, of concern in the workplace. Um, talked about how the, uh, policies now should refer to impairment because of, of a drug and not just testing positive. So it goes a little further. It requires a lot more vetting than it used to. Just because someone tests positive does not mean that they are impaired. So if one's job and you see them working and it looks like that they're impaired for some reason, um, then you would have to get other staff to sign off to say, yes, that person has this characteristic or that characteristic so that you can back yourself up because if that person tests negative, they could come back on you to say, you accuse me of something that I didn't didn't have a problem with. So this is really an HR issue and, um, if we are not up to speed on that right now, I would suggest that we contact, uh, the Virginia Risk Sharing Association to get the training that may be, um, available in that area. If, um, this, um, is more of a concern for our safety sensitive positions such as our police officers, uh, fire EMS. And if there's a lapse in judgment that's causing, um, severe, um, legal issues, then that's a big red flag for us that we have to deal with. And if it looks like that that person is impaired in some way, we have to document that, get another person to document what they're seeing as well, and then send them for testing. Um, it is also affecting, um, uh, the, the ability to carry a gun. Um, if the person, um, is for instance, uh, has, has a prescription for medical marijuana, they cannot possess a firearm. So, uh, we had somewhere in Virginia, there was a situation where a person presented their, uh, medical card to HR to show that they could, um, have the medical marijuana. It turns out that that person had to turn in their CDL card, uh, license because they can no longer drive the, the jurisdiction's vehicles. Um, with that license. So it's very touchy. There are a lot of ifs, ands, and buts about it, but it's something that is going to you will be hearing about it more and more as this policy gets tested more and more in, in the workplace and not just in city and county government, but in any workplace. The next one was about cybersecurity. Um, they, um, Risk Risk Sharing Association said that they had seventy-seven total claims in the last year. Fifty percent of them are because of fraudulent, um, instruction. It's because of people in finance are being targeted big time. Uh, they said that in regard to you sending out an invoice to, um, for payment and it's charged, they can, the people that are, um, stalking, um, the internet will see the activity that you have, especially they said it's happening more frequently on big construction projects where you're invoicing constantly and you're using the same bank. And then they start looking at your habits and then they will change that if you're sending money uh, somewhere, they'll change that so that that money is going to come to them rather than where it needs to go. And then you're going to find out that the contractors that you're trying to pay are not getting their money, but it's going to these folks. So that's, uh, a really a, a big red flag that you can also find out more information about. I could go into a lot of detail, but we want to go home tonight. Um.
Only twenty other items, right?
That's a lot and I might actually just cut it in half. Um, they talked about site inspections that on our, uh, city property, county property that we need to do this regularly. Um, there are trip hazards that occur. You have to look at your means of ingress and egress to make sure that you're up to speed on, um, the safety features of, of that to make sure that you're doing everything reasonably possible, um, to to avoid having claims against us. Um, they said to even do it every season, not just a one and done kind of issue. Um, lights out in parking lots at night, for example. And, um, there's crime prevention by environmental design that there are some reasons that you might want to build something or you have, um, a design of some sort that you didn't mean it to be something that could become a hazard, but then it's there and it does need to get addressed so that in the future someone is not hurt by it. And then on top of that, then the city is affected by it. Um, they said that a lot of IT departments are sending out FISH email. And I think we're getting those. So, uh, Nathan's doing the right thing by that. Um, and some places that actually if you fail the test, if you send that FISH email back to where to respond to it, it goes back to the IT department. And if they get it back, then you have to take the test over again, um, to, um, to make sure that you are doing the right thing in identifying FISH emails. And then you no longer have access until you keep passing that test and, and you're not um, responding to those phishing emails. I talked about parliamentary procedure and that went through pretty quickly and there were a lot of things that I wanted to catch that I didn't. Um, one of the things though that was a takeaway was that when you're trying to make a motion, make sure that you're clear about what you're trying to convey. For instance, um, don't say that you're making a motion to approve SRP. Say it's that it's supplemental retirement program. Spell it out so that, um, uh, there are no ifs, ands, or buts about it if somebody challenges what SRP is. Um, they said to be very cautious when you're making motions and approving things in regard to zoning visit, uh, petitions. Um, these cannot be dropped or postponed indefinitely indefinitely because state code requires reasonable time, uh, to return to decide on matters in regard to zoning petitions. Um, they addressed issues regarding absent members. They used the example of if a matter is pending in June and then it's decided on in July and that person was absent in June, they can vote in July. Um, adjourning means the business is completed. Recession is just simply a break or a, a temporary break that you'll be coming back to it. Uh, the presenter showed a video where it was a government, uh, meeting, uh, city or county board and someone called one of their peers an idiot and said that Betsy called you an idiot too. She used that as an example to say that you don't call names to anybody and never throw anybody under the bus either. Must follow your bylaws. Mistakes are okay. They can be corrected. You have a misbehaving member, there are options to take in regarding to censure, uh, removing them from committees, fines or, and from that particular meeting. Fines are usually anywhere between five hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars. So you can discipline. Talk about that. Um, so in, with Virginia Housing, they came to talk about grants and grant opportunities in Virginia. And I found out that the reason they're called Virginia Housing is they changed their name from VHDA to Virginia Housing. And they talked about how one in three households pay thirty percent of their income on housing. One in ten households, this is in Virginia, one in ten households pay fifty percent or more of their income on housing. The median cost of real estate from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two went from two hundred and eighty-six thousand to four hundred and one thousand. The thing, five things that hold back production in the housing market has to do with, with exclusionary zoning, zoning policies, seventy-five percent of, of the land is for single-family homes. Multi-family zoning is limited. NMB is an influential, um, uh, matter when it comes to local approvals. NMB means in, not in my backyard, um, kind of philosophy. And then, um, one of the other things that can hold back production are proffers, um, that can impact feasibility. Talks a lot about, um, the, the do's and don'ts, but I think I'll stop there and continue maybe another time.
Sure.
I finished this one and then it would go also into, um, talking about taxation, revenue and economic development, which was very interesting, especially with all of the work that we have getting ready to, um, be decided in regard to Spotswood and the V-Doc property. Uh, there was someone else that talked about land use and zoning. So all those things kind of go hand in hand. So I'd rather do that another day.
Certainly. We'll plan on it, uh, next meeting perhaps to, uh, follow through on those. And, um, thank you very much for attending that conference. I'll remind, uh, all of council, uh, VML is our, uh, industry organization and advocate in Richmond. Um, they put on lots of great, uh, sessions of, for meetings, information. Great way to meet some of your peers across the state. Um, I think the VML conference in November is going to be in Newport News. Norfolk, thank you. I know it was an end off the coast, uh, and it's going to be in Norfolk and encourage you, um, if you can, to make time to, to attend that conference. Uh, again, valuable information and, uh, relationships built to help you, uh, better serve our community. And, um, thank you for bringing those things back, Ms. Alexander. Um, uh, in the past week, I also attended a VML Legislative Committee meeting. Um, there were a variety of things working towards setting up the, uh, legislative agenda for VML for the state. But two things I wanted to make, uh, Lexington City Council aware of, Senate Bill one, 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 I'm not stuttering. Um, it talks about the powers of cities and towns on vacant, uh, building registration fees. And in essence, uh, right now, if there's a vacant building, um, uh, you can put, impose on an owner of any building that has been vacant for at least twelve months and meets the definition of derelict building, uh, it's going to increase from one hundred to five hundred dollars as a, uh, fee. Uh, the bill increases the civil penalty for failing to pay such a fee from two hundred to five hundred and the first violation, for the first violation and two thousand dollars for any subsequent violations. And, um, so pu- putting some serious teeth in addressing derelict buildings and unresponsive owners. Um, having, uh, dealt with that in the past, um, with, with some properties, it's, it's a good tool that the city may need to, to utilize. Uh, the other Senate Bill thirteen ninety-one, um, and this as a reminder is the, uh, bill and there's one in the House talking about, um, if there is a real estate professional or real estate management company that is managing a piece of property, uh, none of the Uh, none of the local short-term rental policies apply. They're they're immune to the limitations that we've put on uh, residential neighborhoods and um, uh. It has to be your primary residence. Um, this failed last year, but it's come back and um, uh. Our organization V M L is fighting against uh, this particular, this uh, legislation. So please uh, stay tuned on those two, especially the Senate Bill thirteen ninety-one and contact um, our. Representatives in um, Richmond to not support this initiative. Sponsored by the real estate uh, um, lobby in particular. Additionally, as I mentioned, our last meeting, July sixth meeting, uh, canceling and encourage you all to uh. Celebrate and enjoy the Fourth of July with uh, friends, family and loved ones. On June fifth, we had our work session to talk with Echelon and Urban Core about the V dot property and their proposal. Um, I would propose that and ask the city manager to schedule a closed session on July twentieth. For us to get an update from the city manager and to discuss negotiations on the sale of that property. Uh, and responding to the proposal from Echelon and Urban Core. With the expectation that uh, unless there are any, just for a timeline, expectation. That it would be on our agenda for consideration at our August third meeting. And. That's all I had. Any questions? Regarding that? Yes, sir.
Um, two questions, one for was for the Senate bill with uh, with the ones. Uh, was that one hundred uh, to five hundred dollar increase? Was that per year um, for the? Uh, I guess the vacant property registry.
Per violation.
Per violation. And then the other question I had, um. Are you saying that uh, we the August third would? It would be on the agenda, the sale would be on the agenda potentially?
Um, I our response to um, whi- which would be to accept the proposal or not. Uh, which at our work session, Echelon was very clear, they want to stay on track and and partner with us. Um, their efforts to um. By getting into the weeds, their their efforts to uh, start turning dirt is eighteen to twenty-four months out because of current market conditions. But they're still keenly interested in in pursuing this with us if we're interested in pursuing it with them. And so the ball's in our court to uh, respond to their proposal. And again, we'll discuss our negotiations and what that agreement. Slash contract would look like on the uh, twentieth of July in hopes of bringing it forward for council's consideration on the third. Just targets to work towards. If we're not able to resolve things on the twentieth, it it could go on to the um. Uh, the seventeenth meeting uh, in August, the August seventeen meeting, but uh, we'll plan for it to be. On the agenda for the third.
Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to uh. Pass this um, two minutes, three minutes of my report to our finance director Jennifer Bell, just to give an update on our current revenue status. As we near the end of the fiscal year, so she can just take a couple of minutes.
I think she stepped out.
Out woman, I will.
There she is. She just stepped in. Jen, take it away.
Good evening. Sorry for the dramatics. Um, thank you for the opportunity to share this information tonight. Um, I really wanted to share that May was another strong month for revenue collections for the city of Lexington. And um, for anybody in the, any of our citizens who are interested in seeing the monthly tax collection graphs that are provided. They're included in the weekly city manager report, which you can sign up to receive um, on the city's website. Um, so looking at the month of May's collections, um, sales tax are currently one and a half percent ahead of. Fiscal year twenty-two actual, though we are still lagging F Y twenty-three budget by approximately two percent. Meals tax collections in May, which reflect April sales, were ahead of budget. And we are expecting a healthy surplus on this line item. Lodging tax collections also remain strong with F Y twenty-three solidly um, twelve percent above F Y twenty-two collections year to date. Business likes license tax payments were due on March first. And at this point in the year, we've collected a hundred and sixteen percent of budget. Rescue fee collections for this month were a little bit lower than normal. However, we're still one point three percent ahead of F Y twenty-two. And we've already surpassed budget for this year by five percent with two months of collections remaining. Water and sewer collections improved in the month of May and we are five point one percent ahead of F Y twenty-two. Although we are still looking to miss budget for this year by just under nine percent. So looking at the the key indicators we've been following this year, which also includes our um, general interest collections. We are looking to surpass our budgeted revenues by um, around one point seven million dollars. And that's before we take into account um, the expense side of the equation where our expenses are also coming in under budget. So. Our surplus for F Y twenty-two will be um, will be healthy. Um, and then also just as a reminder, when the year-end financials come out, it'll look even larger this year. Because we'll have a one-time influx of cash from ARPA revenue that we're able to recognize this year. Which should be in the neighborhood of three point eight to four million dollars.
Jen, one question on the B poll tax.
Yes.
Um, remind me what all's included in there and uh, reason you think we're doing so well. Also to budget.
I may need to um, ask for some information from our commissioner of the revenue on that, but it is our business license taxes and I I. I can't say though if we're encouraging new businesses to come in or what exactly is driving that, but I'll find out and get back to everybody.
Okay. Maybe uh, certainly staying to reason we've had quite a few bi- new businesses crank up and um. That's always a good thing.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Chuck, Mr. Smith?
Uh, do we know what to attribute the shortage for water and sewer? Is is that a a focus area or is it just across the board?
We are trying to figure out what what that is. I'm working with Public Works and um. And the city manager, we're all trying to put our heads together to really get to the bottom of that to find out why we're missing the target.
I guess that leads to the question, are the higher water and sewer fees affecting? Usage, I guess in different, either different sectors or just, you know, broadly across the the community.
That's definitely an an aspect for us to dig into further.
I mean, we've been seeing that trend for a few years and then we've also been seeing the trend of rainy springs where we've been stuck with. Expenses that, you know, half million to a million dollars of expenses going to, you know, due to wastewater. Um, due to rain, you know, so hopefully we come in. Where we want to be because, you know, even when we missed the revenue targets, it's been okay since expenses and the utility fund are hopefully down.
E- exactly.
It is. And 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 overall. Excuse me, overall water consumption is down.
I was going to say my my recollection with um, uh, i- is that, for instance, we found that major leak at V M I. That was pumping out, I can't remember how much water, but that uh, is significant reduction in what was being lost.
Um, N W N.
Right, right. So we had two instances where we've had improvements and and both universities have done a great job. Of reducing their water usage either through uh, projects in particular. Um, uh, consciously how they're operating. But then also with the devices that they've been using in low flow and things of that nature. City manager.
I just wanted to note that uh, for sp- more specificity, water purchases are down, so the expense side of the equation is down. We're not sure that water consumption, the billing side is actually going down. We're just not paying for water that's wasted or has been wasted.
Any other questions for the finance director?
I'm wondering if the the business license tax has anything to do with the renewals that I believe are due in March. And then when Walker Program has graduates, like they're encouraged to go and get their business license, but I don't know how many. That graduate are from Lexington.
Yeah, I I'm interested to find out too, so I'll report back.
Sure. I have one question, uh, not to put you on the spot, but Patrick talked about. The cost of the I and I projects and, you know, put out up costs that could be up to a million dollars. And just in my my recollection, thinking where we've allocated those funds and am I right that we're actually spending money now that? Essentially was in budgets in F Y twenty-one and F Y twenty-two and we're just now kind of getting to that.
I believe that's true, we had.
Not sure was far back is F Y twenty-one.
Because I know from F Y twenty-one, I looked that we carried over four hundred thousand dollars for I and I uh. Projects from F Y twenty-one to twenty-two and then in twenty-two, we allocated six hundred and twenty. So there's about a million and change. And I didn't remember us, and if we've done previously, a lot of this the slip lining.
No, we had not. We had that first phase that um, Patrick Madigan mentioned that's complete over by Link Road area. But other than that, that's the amount of slip lining we've done.
I just point that out just in case people are, you know, wondering, oh, a million dollars. Actually, we've set aside those funds already, uh, and we've got them. I mean, so that's, so thank you. Thank you, Jen.
I will continue on then. One of the things I heard earlier this week from a contact with V dot is that. They're closing out the East Nelson Street Bridge Project. And the only bridge I know on East Nelson Street is at the courthouse and it's been finished for years. So I asked our city clerk to look at that and she said, yes. It was finished in two thousand fourteen and V dot is finally closing that project out. Little surprising, uh, the good news is they owe us just over five thousand dollars. Uh, but it took a while for them to apparently find that uh, just interesting tidbit. Um, all of us know, I believe, that we are looking at renovation of City Hall that is in the um, capital improvement plan. And next week we'll kick off the space needs assessment. After that, uh, the work should be concluded in September based on what we find out in that study. We'll then look at uh, going into the second phase of that, which would be design and constr- uh, design and engineering, if you will, of the building itself. Bring in some architects in to use what they've learned or we've learned in that space needs assessment to see what it is we actually need to design in City Hall. So that's also in the budget for the coming fiscal year, so we are on track. Um, just some update from the fire department, one of our firefighters, E M Ts uh, is on light duty now for several weeks. He injured his wrist as they were evacuating a patient. Uh, up a stairway. Um, the fire department taught classes in CPR, first aid and stop the bleed at Saint Patrick's uh, church for some of the members of the church there. Uh, the regional hazardous materials operations classes have been completed and the written and practical tests have been taken. We're looking for uh. Test results to be uh, provided soon. The department hosted the regional tap tabletop emergency response exercise for the dam failure possibilities at Morse Creek Reservoir. And that's training that is a responsibility of the public works department and is attended by all regional emergency planning response uh, team partners. The new ladder truck Tower Nine is now officially in service and the current ladder truck nine is retired after twenty-five years of service with the city. Uh, updates in the police department, Lieutenant Paget met with Emily King with Washington Lee to discuss public safety programs for young adults and teens in our area. Chief Green and Lieutenant Conry attended the planning meeting for the National Night Out. Discuss plans for this annual event that will occur at Hall's Drive-In this summer. The department held policy review session to finalize the new operating policies stemming from the recent review and policy updates. Which come out of the changes in state and federal law enforcement standards. And on Monday, the la- the fifth, last Monday, three new officers were sworn into the department, which is a nice uh. Addition to the department after we've been down for um, a number of years, a number of officers. Uh, Public Works is supporting the Woods Creek Trail cleanup on the thirteenth, which has already occurred, but also on the sixteenth and the twentieth. And this cleanup is uh, an effort of the Friends of Woods Creek Trail, a newly established organization. Uh, with the assistance from the local master gardeners. The notice to proceed on the East Denny Circle Water Main Replacement Project occurred on June twelfth and um. The substantial completion date for that is after ninety days, which would be September tenth. And the full completion of the project is another thirty days after that, which will be October tenth. Between September and October tenth, we're re- really looking at minor concrete asphalt um, restoration, grass uh. Grading, that type of thing, maybe some very minor construction or um, excavation, but it really is going to be minor. After that point, so hopefully it won't be too much um, of a problem with Washington Lee, of course, because it's right through their campus. Uh, and we're coordinating very um, much detail with them and so we're getting good coordination from them. The Evergreen Traffic Light bid came in at one hundred forty-six thousand dollars, which is less than the one hundred seventy-six thou- seventy-six thousand that has been budgeted. And as you may recall, that intersection Evergreen and um. Nelson Street will also control the lights at Walker and Nelson and at Lewis and Nelson. So everything on the east end will be coordinated to uh, provide for better traffic control in that area of the community, better flow of traffic. So we'll wait and see how that works out, but it should be a a nice improvement uh, in that busy area of our community. Um, although we're not in the phase yet of evaluating the V dot uh, site development. I will say that our planning director, Arnie Glazer, has taken the opportunity to get with V dot. And ask them whether or not we might need traffic studies in that area and what would be the requirements that might uh, trigger traffic uh, studies. So we're on top of that. He's working hard at that already. Uh, as uh, Patrick Madigan noted, we have a consulting engineer that helps us with both stormwater and sanitary sewers. And designs our system and he's taken a look at the town branch and Sarah Run sanitary sewer system. We probably all know that the sanitary sewer system, Sarah's Run, that is, is where the Spotswood project would drain into. Excuse me, Sarah's Run is where the V dot project would uh, drain into town branch where the Spotswood project would drain into. And we believe that ba- basically with the work that's already been done there, that we're in pretty good shape for both of those developments. There are some additional needs over in the uh, town branch, uh, sanitary sewer because of the um. Flow characteristics based on different pipe sizes, but otherwise we're in good shape there. And as mentioned earlier, um, there are substantial savings when we look at slip lining in our system. Um, the most recent data we have on the Sarah's Run. Stretch of sanitary sewer is that we could be paying up to three hundred thirty thousand dollars a year on I and I in that area alone. So if we put a million and a half, two million dollars into that area, we could be seeing a substantial return on investment in the very near future. Uh, just with our own cost. Paying for the water that we're, the rainwater, the groundwater that we're treating, not to mention as Mr. Allagood mentioned, what it might save us in plant renovations in the future. Um, the Gold Star Memorial um, in the park, Jones Point Park is fully funded. We are looking to work with the um, the team that's putting that uh, memorial together to potentially put in that concrete slab using public works labor. I will say that we may not be able to do that because of the tools that is involved and the skills, if you will. When you're dealing with a piece of concrete that is of that size. So we may be able to work on that, we may not. Uh, they are looking at putting that uh, concrete slab in within the next two months and with a um. Um, dedication perhaps uh, is early September twenty-fourth. Um. About a week and a half ago, uh, Patrick Madigan and I, our public works director, met with a representative from the Army Corps of Engineers. And interested individuals in the community who would like to see uh, water flow restored in the mill race. Uh, it was a very productive meeting. One of the things we learned from the gentleman from the Army Corps was that. We do not need permits to do any work above the normal uh, flow levels of the river, the high water flows. And so he marked where those were exactly, and if we were to, that is this group wants to do this, we're able to. Go out into the mill race, do some uh, excavations, um, uh, removal of debris, sediment, et cetera. Um, there would be, you know, no permits required. They've indicated that they would do that without having to have participation financially from the city. And so that's just good information leading to what may be the next step should they desire to move forward with that. Of course, they'd have to get permission from the city and coordinate their activities with us, but it was just a positive interaction with the um, folks from the Army Corps of Engineers. The other thing we learned is if you are below that high, the normal high water mark, um, there are very extensive permits required. In fact, one of those um, activities that may be required is uh, a study of an endangered species of mussel in the river. And that of course gets um, that extends the process significantly when you start going for permits at that level, if you will. Um. Washington Lee, again, one of our partners is beginning some hydrant testing next week and they're going to test about forty-eight hydrants. On campus or adjacent to their facilities in their community. So for a short period of time during that period. Customers may notice some discoloration in their water, but the water is completely safe. There will be no other factors or um. elements that would impact their water quality. So there's really nothing there other than discoloration. And of course, having those meters tested is good for safety, not only on campus, but in our entire community, because we can test the fire flows in those areas. Unfortunately, we had some damage in Evergreen Cemetery recently. We had two headstones that were hit and damaged by a vehicle. We had no idea, of course, when that occurred or who might have been responsible. Luckily, those things only occur maybe once a year where we have damage in either cemetery. So we're going to perhaps report that to the insurance company if the amount of damage exceeds what our deductible is. The Hope House Grant, and you might recall that there was a grant to the opioid abatement authority to create a residential facility, so individuals who have substance abuse problems, opioid abuse problems have a place to go, a safe environment where they can begin to then re-enter society, jobs provided, support provided, counseling provided. That project was, that grant was awarded for two hundred ten thousand dollars. And so I believe that effort then would begin to go forward with that facility to be put in place in the city of Buena Vista. Also, a grant was submitted, no award, of course, but very recently submitted by Boxer Wood, called Trees for All. And it would provide free plantings and some planting, planting and planning in both the city of Lexington, city of Buena Vista, and then in the Glasgow area of the county. And we'll see if this grant is awarded, but it's basically, you know, environmental, if you will, changes in the environment to reduce global warming, et cetera, and of course, create a more green environment for us all. I wanted to also take just a few minutes to update on the skate park. I had a very extensive report from the folks who are involved in that, and I saw Ms. Halseth earlier, and she did leave, of course. But just as an update, ten thousand dollar grant was received from the Carillion Hospital Foundation, and that finished the half-pipe earlier this spring. They have hosted free lessons for three Sundays this past spring. They purchased additional skateboards and helmets and protective equipment, so new skaters have that equipment and can skate. There being their planning fall lessons and to give individuals, young people primarily, instruction in how to skate park or how to skateboard. And they're also scheduling a roller skate night at the skate park on July tenth to provide other activities other than actual skateboarding using those facilities. So that's really great activity from a volunteer group, requires almost no effort from the city, and they've done a great job of giving young people and some older young people the activity to recreate in that regard. And that is the end of my report. I would answer any questions if you have them.
Ms. Strawn.
I have one on the mill race. So at the inlet to the mill race, if they were to remove some of the bedrock to increase the water flow, that would require a permit?
If it's below the normal high water mark, it would require a permit. If there's anything removed above that mark, whether it's bedrock, sediment, debris, it does not require a permit. So it's not the, it's not the material that's being removed, it's the.
No, that's what I'm saying. So you don't know where that mark is offhand. Is that?
No, we do know the mark. We just don't know if we would be into bedrock or not. You mentioned bedrock.
Yeah, because you know, right as we found this out when we removed the dam, that there, we were hoping that water would come in at the at the entrance, at the head of the race into the mill race, but there's a bedrock hump there. And in the report, I know from the group, they were saying one of their plans was to excavate some of that bedrock. I didn't know if that portion of the project, because it sounded made from that definition, that to do that portion of the project, it would require a permit. But you don't know. Okay.
We haven't tested where the bedrock is located. Obviously, it probably goes throughout the entire area, but nearer the watermark, there's obviously a lot of gravel, loose stone, et cetera. We don't know how deep that gravel or loose stone is. Frankly, what the gentleman from the Army Corps said is, once you're below that normal water, high water mark, if you're in there working by hand, it doesn't require permits either. If we bring equipment in there, it does. So depending on how interested people are in that group of proceeding, they could be in there with picks and shovels and removing stone and gravel and sediment, and it would not require a permit. Now, that's obviously quite a bit of work, so I, I don't know that would proceed. And again, we do have to test where that bedrock is, because obviously, if it's in the area where it's below that normal high water mark, it would require a permit, and it would be a much more extensive process.
Otherwise, bring your snorkel. Thank, come on. Ms. Alexander.
I have two questions. One, in regard to the skate park group. Do you know if they're going to offer the roller skating events more often, or it's just a one-time thing?
All I know is it's offered this summer. Given what I've seen from them, if it's successful, they'll probably try and continue it. They've been very good at continuing lessons and open entertainment nights for the, again, advocates, or not advocates, the individuals who are using the skate park.
And the other has to do with the memorial at Jordan's Point. Is it anticipated to have the memorial placed in the same area where the mock-up was? Or someplace else on that lot?
That is where we do anticipate it being placed. I think we all have seen it, perhaps. Most people understand Jordan's Point Park. There's a pavilion right there, so if somebody is going into that, going to visit the memorial and have some type of remembrance or ceremony gathering, they've got a place to shelter from the weather conditions, whether it's rain or sun. Parking is directly adjacent. It's very accessible, and we don't want to be in a situation where individuals who might have a mobility challenge could not get to it. So.
I'm not questioning the lot itself. I'm just questioning the location of the monument in that lot.
Yeah, that's where.
Is that exact location in that lot?
Within a few feet. I mean, it's not fifty feet away, but it might be two or three feet of variance.
Okay.
Other questions. Ms. Allagood.
Just a point of clarification, the Denny Circle project. Is that the project that's associated with the master meter for W N L?
Yes, sir.
And the associated piping that prepares all the agreed upon piping? And that'll be one project that'll be finished, and then we're all current.
Correct. It'll finish that project of piping, or if you will, water main replacement.
Thank you.
Other questions. Hearing none. City Attorney. Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Just a couple of items. Sorry, I had to run, ask the janitor to turn the, his music down there real quick. Sorry, I had to get up and run there. You had asked me to consider the share the air contract council had. And I know I've spoken with the mayor about it, but I wanted to report back to all of council the concerns I had with the agreement. There are some elements of the agreement that frankly are internally inconsistent, as I view it. It speaks in terms of being a self-enforcing involuntary contract, but then elsewhere, it speaks in terms of prohibition. No tobacco or use of electronic smoking device is allowed on public-owned parklands. And I think the inconsistency there between the voluntariness, on one hand, the language of prohibition creates a problem. Another example, it says if a person is in violation of the voluntary compliance, that raises some questions in my mind. But then it goes on to say, in that circumstance, a park employee will direct that person to extinguish the product. Again, I think that probably pushes the envelope too far beyond what city council has the authority to do. And so, as I mentioned to Mr. Friedman, and I'll mention here, it'd be nice if we could revise the language of the agreement to make it more of an expression of policy and less about a statement of prohibition. If we could, if we could manage to get their agreement to revise it, to more align it with our authority, I think that would be in our best interest. And so I have concerns about executing in its current form. And I'm going to bounce through a couple of issues. If you have any questions, you can certainly jump in anytime.
Jeremy, hold on. Go ahead, Nick.
In the, I'm sorry, in addition to the concerns you mentioned, I also thought the word nuisance in there may also be a concern because that could potentially have.
Yeah, and I think you're right, Nick. Nuisance can be a charged word. The reason I didn't bring that up specifically, in that sentence, it says that the park employee can inform the individual that it's a nuisance and not a mandate, not that we will direct him that he's in violation. So I thought that language was a little bit more watered down because of the use can of the word can as opposed to direct. You know, if it would speak in terms of strongly discourage smoking and vaping or request that they extinguish or, you know, point out that it's something that individuals may find to be a nuisance, I think that would be something that would be more, again, aligned with our actual authority. And so that's why I brought it up to Frank in a conversation we had, and again, wanted to bring it up to you, that I would not suggest you sign it in its current form.
Jeremy, have you done any, do you have electronic or paper?
I have a paper copy. I can certainly do a, I can reach out and see if they'll give me a word version to do a red line, or I can do a handwritten red line if that's more.
I was going to say, I guess my ambition would be if Jim can incorporate your comments and create an agreement that we can then negotiate with Rachel about signing and participating.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure that was what council wanted to do.
Unless there's an objection.
No, no objection, just a comment, just for a learning experience from this whole thing that we not try to have an agreement unless we have seen it ahead of the meeting would be helpful.
Always.
I second that.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I didn't want y'all to be surprised by something, and I don't know if this has come up before, but Jim and I have worked through the Brubaker Park lease for the pool, and it's going to be effectively a ten-year lease. And when you enter into a long-term lease like that, there's a procedure you have to go through. And as we lead up to, it'll either be the July twenty or the August meeting, you will see advertisements for opportunities for folks to submit bids to essentially lease the property. You have to go through a process that's set out in the code that's very similar to the franchise property. Don't anticipate anybody's going to bid except for the Friends of the Rockbridge Swimming. I think that's the name of the organization. But again, you still have to go through that process to create a binding lease that extends more than five years. And again, I just didn't want you to be surprised if you open the newspaper and you see that, or if we show up at the next meeting, and that process goes on. Next issue I just wanted to touch on, you had also asked that I go back and listen to the audio recording from the May eleven twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting where the lot width amendment to the city zoning ordinance was adopted. I listened to that recording. I also listened to the April thirteen Planning Commission meeting. I reviewed the materials that were submitted to the Planning Commission by staff and citizens. Of course, the zoning amendment was intended to correct an inconsistency that the zoning administrator had identified in the ordinance while the Spotswood C U P was under consideration. There was a lot of discussion during that May eleven meeting, but my takeaway of the biggest concern and what I wanted to report back to you about was whether going forward, there was going to be a requirement for compliance with both the lot area and lot width mandates in that chart, or whether it was an either-or situation, and you would only have to comply with one, the lot width or the lot area requirement. And just as a little background, you know, the zoning administrator has an important role in administering the zoning ordinance, and part of that is interpreting it as we go through that C U P process. And he observed what I think he would describe, I don't think Arnie's there, but what he would describe as a narrow inconsistency specific to multifamily dwellings in the R M and R L C districts. And this was where you had the unit-based calculation of lot width, and it seemed to run afoul of the lot area requirement in the table. In essence, the calculation of lot width had the effect of undermining some of the lot area, I guess, the capabilities of developing multifamily dwellings based on the lot area standard. Indeed, the city council agreed with that assessment, given the actions that you've taken. The lot width calculation was not intended to undermine that multifamily dwelling application in, with regard to lot area. So I get the two get a little confusing. What the planning commission did and what city council did was eliminate that calculation. That was the source of the inconsistency. The source of the ambiguity was the calculation. By reducing it to one hundred feet, you eliminate that concern. So going forward, if that is the concern of individuals, I don't see an issue about whether it is an either or or an and. It is an and. Applicants in the future have to comply with lot width and a lot area. And I've not ever been asked to opine on that, so that's probably the first you've heard of on this specific issue for me. I don't take issue with anything that really transpired. I think reasonable minds could say there are alternative means that could have been pursued. You could have done an amendment first and then come back with a conditional use permit. But the way it transpired with the zoning administrator making his interpretation with regard to the inconsistency, I think was reasonable. The city council agreed with it through its actions. And then we fixed the inconsistency with the firm figure of a hundred feet for the lot width. Also, just to address two other issues that were, came up, I think tangentially in the planning commission, but it wasn't entirely clear. One, if there is any concern about the underlying validity of the conditional use permit at Spotswood, I don't think there is a concern. There needs to be a concern. Virginia Code Section fifteen point two, twenty-two eighty-five F makes it clear that even if there were an issue, there has been no timely challenge, so it is effective going forward. And second, to the extent there was any concern that city council was not or does not have to abide by the zoning ordinance, I don't think that was an issue in this process, but just so everybody's clear, city council and the planning commission do abide by the zoning ordinance, and they have to abide by the zoning ordinance and will do so, certainly as long as I'm helping you out as best as I can. So I didn't know if you'd have any questions about that, but I did want to get back to you and tell you that I had reviewed everything and kind of what my, what my take of the proceedings was. Ms. Strawn mentioned, I'm moving on to another issue, so interrupt me if you want to. Ms. Strawn mentioned the Washington Lee.
Before you move on, members of council, have any questions on that issue or it's fully dealt with and moving on?
Yeah, that was very helpful, and I was planning to come back and listen to this portion of the meeting.
Jeremy, go right ahead.
Yeah, with regard to planning, planning commission, Ms. Strawn mentioned the Washington Lee site plan. Arnie reached out to me several days ago and asked me to take a look under the Conflicts of Interest Act as to what were the implications with regard to individuals on the planning commission? And then, obviously, to the extent it would come to city council, what the implication would be from a Conflict of Interest Act standpoint with regard to those folks affiliated with Washington Lee. I have not yet completed that analysis. I'm mostly there, but I've got a few more loose ends I want to tie up. So I hope to be getting something out in very short order, but I just wanted everybody to know that we are looking at that. The issue candidly comes down to the same thing that I think we talked about a little bit when we were doing the Code of Ethics, and that is, is the transaction solely, does it have applications solely to the Washington and Lee property? When you have a zoning use determination, I don't think you have an application solely to the property because you necessarily take into account the impacts of neighboring parcels. You have to. You have to take into consideration the characteristics of the neighborhood and how a proposed use change would impact those neighbors. But this isn't a use analysis. This is now a site plan analysis. The use is built in from the master plan. And since the use is now permitted as a matter of right, we've got to look at it at a little bit different level, and that is the site plan is more about just ministerial, does it comply with the zoning ordinance? Setbacks, screenings, location of certain elements. That I need to, I just want to finish that analysis before I give a final answer, but I just wanted to go ahead and give you an idea of what some of the issues were, so you weren't surprised when I came out with my thoughts on the process. And I think that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Any questions on that last issue?
No, we reserve the right to come back with additional questions, as always. Thank you for, in advance, for delivering that before the item comes up on planning's docket and helping us navigate to best serve our community. Grateful for your efforts.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Four items. Hearing none. Jeremy, again, thank you. As we work towards concluding this meeting, Jenny's done a terrific job of keeping us all informed of applications. I'll remind the public and council that we have two spots on our planning commission, which the, and they're coming up for appointment, and I anticipate bringing names forward at our July twenty meeting. We have one application for planning, and again, welcome other applications to fill those positions. Um, we have one application for planning, and again, welcome other applications to uh fill those positions. And then we received another application for the MSA and plan to bring that name forward at the um July twenty meeting as well. So just to forecast and also solicit folks that want, want to serve the community. Um, uh, also, I just wanted to, as we uh navigate all the different endeavors and perhaps uh most specifically tied to the, the work uh that goes on at Public Works every day. Uh, Winston Churchill is credited with, success is not final and failure is not fatal. It's the courage to continue that counts, and we're grateful for uh everyone that has the courage to continue each and every day and uh making our community a better place. And uh want to be the first to uh wish all the fathers out there a happy Father's Day. Unless there's anything else to come before uh council, we will stand adjourned at eight fifty-nine. We are adjourned. Thank you.